Yes, it was locked down on the internet.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta have a password to get in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So since you're not a guest, your information. There should be two of them.
Uh, well. Yeah, there are two of them, but they 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 share the same bandwidth, so.
But something certain, I guess.
Well, and there there are blocks.
Actually, come on the hills.
On the number of social media and.
His wheels are gonna fall off of these chairs. You're losing part of your wheels.
That's when it blow off. We're in place for national.
Yesterday, I thought. Yesterday.
Yesterday, oh, okay, isn't that stronger issue?
It takes a whole month.
This time.
Okay, it's nine o'clock.
It's nine o'clock, and call the uh. Meeting to order of the uh, the meeting of the the Board of County Commissioners, Cottigny County, and I'll think it's my turn to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. They just. General number two, call for public comment, um, public may comment, um. We have time set aside at the end toward the end of the agenda, be able to comment either in person or by telephone, the telephone numbers are. Six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven, just remind everybody to to silence your cell phones, if you need to take call, please step out. Into the rotunda if you need to talk to somebody on your phone. Are there any conflict of interest items?
No, no, no.
And I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda today, so motion by Van Duzen, second by Waterman, any comments, changes? Hey, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, okay, that motion carries, um. Number four, action to approve the February twenty first minutes.
So move.
Second it.
I'm sorry, sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, second number five, um, so motion by Johnson, second by Schwer, any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll say no, get that motion carries. Number six, action to approve a request from the Boys and Girls Club to sell alcohol at the cent at the Camel Races event scheduled at the Cottigny County Extension Center Complex.
Yeah, I'm pushing. There you go.
Hi, yes, thanks for having um, the Boys and Girls Club here today, my name is Kelly Jaderborg. And we are in our eighth year of having our Camel Race fundraising event, um, it's the seventh year at the Cottington County um. Uh, Extension Complex, and so, yeah, so we um, are just here to request uh, to be able to serve alcohol at that fundraising event. Uh, Dempsey's um, does the service for us, and so we, you know, like. Have them do their professional uh, business around that side of things.
What's the date of your event?
It is April twenty eighth.
Questions? And I assume you're gonna have. Play guards in place to pre- prevent underage consumption.
Yep, so we, I mean, they're, you know, yeah, um, bartenders that go through the the um. Training that they would have to do, um, and yeah, we um. Yeah, we've never had an issue before.
And you've done it many times in the past, so.
Yep.
So, so motion by Waterman, second, second by Van Duzen, so to approve this request from Boys and Girls Club, any other discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll say no, okay, that motion carries.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, what the reports? Andrew, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Andrew.
Morning. Why, Andrew?
Good morning, but you got worse.
Well, since last month, uh, we we had a region two in-person meeting in Aberdeen, um, so Paul, he owns on uh, January twenty fifth, nothing really significant. Uh, came from that. Uh, we did have our final FEMA call um, in regards to the. Disaster um, the four, six, five, six uh, from last year, um, on January twenty sixth, yeah, that was the May uh. Your age of, okay, twelve. Um, and uh, we we've been a brief from that on February seventh, if I remember that day right, uh-huh, so. Think that's completely closed out, resolved, I mean. Cindy got the check, right?
Nope, not yet.
Okay.
Well, so it's not.
But, okay. Things on our end are completely, all right, resolved, so. Um. City Watertown had the, like, uh, informational public meeting on the USA's um, flood management study. Uh, I didn't really take away a ton from that, but I mean, I mean, they basically. Give us, give the public information on past studies that they'd done, uh, some of the things that they might be looking at. Uh, basically, nothing's off the table, and you know, they just wanna explore all their options, and it may be like a combined. You know, mitigation strategy, you know, for for future flooding here in town. Uh, I was happy to see, like, there is, there's even a commissioner from Day County who came down and. You know, mentioned, it was worth looking at um, Bitter Lake and like, maybe, like, maybe having a more. I don't know, like, broaden the study a little bit to explore some of the impacts from, you know, what happens if, you know, once Bitter Lake starts. You know, pushing more towards Cottigny County, so. I'm hoping that, you know, that becomes, that maybe they expand or look at, you know, a little bit more of the scope of that project, so.
He's actually reached out and talked with me about that and uh, doing some sort of partnership in the future, Cottigny County, so.
If you do that, a multi, just pick one of the emergency manager, management directors on the accounting to kind of oversee something like that, or is that a?
Or is it an engineer state level thing, or?
I think that the core, I mean, I don't know how the the costs, you know, division would be, but.
It all starts with four.
I think so.
I think it it, the point that I had a visit with him a couple of weeks ago, he was just uh, inquiring about the possibility of partnering with Cottington. And the city of Watertown to to do more research on possibility if they were to reduce the level of bitter lake up there and what that would all entail. Uh, cuz all that water comes south, and so um, that's pretty much the discussion, so. So, yeah, we'd be open to at least listening and engaging in conversation.
Um, there. A FEMA class flood fight operations that changed to a virtual class, uh, so Sherry hopped on board uh, as well, uh, she and I both took that in February uh, fifteenth and sixteenth. There's been two flood outlook updates, um, I was here for the first one, I was gone last week for the second one, but I will send out the synopsis of that to um. To people who are interested, um, I guess the the major takeaway is is that the Big Sioux Basin um, in Cottington and Hamlin have an above normal. Likelihood for uh, minor to moderate flooding. And the flood threat still um, primarily determined by future precipitation. Amounts. Uh, there is a what, a winter weather advisory in effect uh, in this area, um, starting at noon today until three P M tomorrow. Uh, they're talking one to four inches breezy winds may make travel just difficult, maybe something worth monitoring if uh. If you're heading north, uh, cuz I mean, even like Sisit and they're talking six to ten inches. It's a bandit snowfall event, they kind of sent out a little information on that this morning, it's difficult to tell exactly how much local areas are going to take uh. Cuz it's a heavy corridor within like a broader snowfall event, so I mean, small shifts north or south in this case would. Have significantly different snowfall totals. A few upcoming events, uh, ICS three hundred and four hundred um, at the County Extension Office, uh, March seventh through tenth. Um, if there's firefighters, law enforcement officers who who need to take either of those classes, uh, they can reach out to me, I can kind of. Talk them through how they need to register for it, um, that's the. ICS for expanding incidents. And then LEPC is going to meet on March fourteenth, uh, we'll send in email with uh, time and location on that a little bit later this week. Um, to members of that group, um, we have a planning P workshop coming up on March twenty first. And weather spotting or training from March twenty eighth from six to eight P M. Um, and March twenty ninth from one to three P M. And that is also at the County Extension.
Okay. Andrew, that uh, planning P workshop, that's on a Tuesday morning, which is our normal commission days, we're okay to.
Yep, you're okay.
Balance in and out of, yeah.
Yeah.
What's the date on that one again?
Um, March twenty first for the planning P. And I was thinking of, I was thinking about that this morning, I wasn't sure if I sent you the invite to that, but if not, I will, okay, I will forward that to you, I can. Think that that was an.
What is planning P?
Uh, planning P is uh.
It's a letter P.
It is a letter P, so uh, it discusses like the initial response to an incident, and then if it's an expanding incident that's going to take multiple operational periods. Uh, going through the process of, you know, setting your incident objectives, um, going through, you know, tactics and.
Pre. Planning process?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pre incident plan.
Okay.
That's down at the P O C or?
Yeah, P O C.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, it is part of ICS?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and uh, did you, was number eight years on the agenda?
Uh.
Well, I wasn't sure where we left that last week, so I just put it on there, you can bypass it if you want to, if you want, need more discussion before we.
I think we might need a little bit more discussion, so it's been, it's for people, what we're talking about is the uh. Possible action to appoint a cybersecurity officer for the courthouse, so.
County content, point of contract, I don't know, did we, did Dan Durkey kind of agree to be? The cybersecurity.
I think so, but we probably should, we should probably check with him.
Our. Session with Dakota State University.
You did, okay.
Yep, um, Dan could not make it, but they made the report available to him, it's not something that they will. Email out because it's security, so he was added as a person who go in and look at it, so. Dan has looked at it, so he knows what Dakota State is recommending for us.
Um, is, so that'd be something for us to have access to to it, so.
I, that I don't know. They're, they're very, well, it's security, they're very uh, touchy about who gets.
Okay, nice, okay.
So. Yeah, it's nothing that they would send to me so that I could print out.
No, I get that, that that part I get, yeah, but.
Okay, I can ask Catherine to put you on that.
Yeah, it'd be good.
List also, all right, if I forget, remind me.
Okay. Thank you, yeah, so I guess, so number eight, we'll, we'll hold off on that.
Thanks.
Hey, Sheriff.
All right. Lot of information.
We love information.
Lot of that. Want to take one and pass one down? Start with our. Monthly report.
Thank you.
Everybody, all of us, as I say, everybody get one there. Perfect. We'll start with the uh, monthly commissary. Balance sheet there, build at the very top there, the end of January twenty three, uh, bank balance was twenty-three thousand two hundred dollars and sixty-nine cents. There was three thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents in the lobby ATM and booking kiosks per grand total of twenty-six thousand. Three hundred and seventy dollars and forty-four cents. At the time this was um, taken, there was two thousand ninety-one dollars and thirty-nine cents in resident balances. Three thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-six cents in commissary items. Tax that wasn't dispersed yet, and the fund balance twenty-one thousand forty-six, forty-nine for the grand total of twenty-six thousand three seventy, forty-four. Which leaves us at our fifteen thousand dollars original. Uh, that we put in there, and you can see we made um. Nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents of commission. For the month of January. Go to the next page there, you can see the sheriff's bank balance here for the month of January ending. Six thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-two cents. There was sixteen dollars in copy fees collected. Five thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars in close section sheriff fees collected. And three hundred and twenty-five dollars in warrant fees collected for grand total of five thousand eight hundred and six dollars and twelve cents, leaving our total back at eight eighty-nine and fifty. Go to the next page there, Lee's got our numbers pulled up on the screen. You can see up there in the top for some sheriff's office activity, um, sheriff's office responded to five hundred and twenty-three cases and calls for service in the month of January. I think it's either eleven accidents that reported. Seventy-five warrants that were served and a hundred and ninety-two civil papers every so. One thousand four hundred and sixteen transport items that were served, if you look back, January of twenty-two, that was about four thousand six hundred and three, so. The numbers have come down a little bit on the transports, if you, when I get to my year-end report, you'll see that the uh, warrants issued were considerably less, so there's a lot less transports for.
So that, so the night on the screen for accident should be eleven.
Should be eleven, okay, all right. And we corrected that after the fact, you know, it should be eleven. We scroll down to the middle here. You'll see some jail activity for the month of January, our average daily population for January was forty-eight point one three. Um, our high ADP was fifty-four, our low was thirty-seven. Jump into our twenty-four seven program, it twenty-seven people on the scram bracelet, seven people on the remote breath. Twenty-four people on the twice daily P V Ts and thirty-six people on the twice weekly U As. And one person on the sweat patch for a grand total of. Ninety-five people on the twenty-four seven program, so. And hundred and eighty-seven bookings for the month of January. Scroll on down to the bottom there, you'll see. Um, out of county contracts, we collected sixteen thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-six cents, work release fees, we collected sixteen hundred dollars, twenty-four seven fees, collected five thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And scram fees, we collected five thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars, so. No questions on that, I just wanna kind of share some of the things that are happening around the jail, around the uh, office here last month and. More recently even here, uh, Johnson Controls has been working on the heating system again yesterday. Been having issues with that, so we're really hoping that you can get our heating and cooling up and going, that project that we're working on, so. Well, Steve has kind of kept you guys updated on the progress there. About six months ago, I was up here and we got approval to fix a couple jail doors with Southern Folger, that wasn't something that was in our budget, um. They are here, they showed up yesterday to start working on those, they're kind of about halfway done, they hoping to be done by maybe tomorrow, Thursday, uh, if everything goes well. So that'll be a bill that'll be coming in here, took them a little longer than planned, it was, they were hoping to get it done by the end of last year, but. Um, it's now March, so just about. So those will be done here soon. Uh, we had an incident in our lobby at the jail, uh, where someone came in and broke our kiosk, our P V T kiosk that we have. Um, the person is in custody right now. That's looking around twenty-nine hundred dollars to fix that, so they're supposed to be here today to work on that. We also had an incident in our lobby here, last couple of weeks where someone had COVID, they ran, they got done with their P V T, they uh. Passed out, fell into the window and shattered our front window in the lobby, so we've had to replace the lobby window as well. So.
The window where the, where the person sits or the.
Right next to the 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 kiosk there, by the door when you come into the jail lobby, yeah. So they kind of shattered all of it.
Over it and they did it.
They, they, yeah.
Hopefully, they weren't hurt too bad.
So we got that, um. Warning plumbing and heating has been here, uh, yesterday, they're working on our water heaters, jail didn't have hot water here. For a little bit, they're replacing some valves and whatnot to the system that are uh, corroded from hard water, it sounds like, so. And I got word from our intercom system, remember last year, you know, August, September, we got approval to uh, get our intercom system updated on last year's budget. Parts and supplies issues, they're, they're hoping within the next month, they can be able to come in and get that installed, so like, say, that was on last year's budget, it's pretty good, I can assure you. Where that's at, so I haven't got that done, but they will hopefully be here soon.
Do you remember how much that was for that intercom?
This time?
I don't remember.
Around fifty off the top of my head, around fifty thousand, maybe a little shy of that. I, I, off the top of my head.
Did we roll that over into this year's budget? Oh, okay.
Like, say, I think we mentioned that, we'd have to do supplement from last year's.
It was, yeah, if if we need it at the end of the year, that's where consumers contingency will come in, so, yep.
And then the same thing with those doors, that was not budgeted item last year, of course, they're not budgeted for this year, that was around a hundred thousand dollars, we accepted that whole two, so there's another hundred thousand that'll be. Coming somewhere, so.
Yes, I guess.
Yeah.
Right, all right.
Be conservative this year.
Yeah, and just, just people.
It works out in the end.
Yeah, most times, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we also had the uh, healthcare company that. Quick, new healthcare company, which was a little bit more too, so, wow, this year's budget's gonna be straining a little bit.
Um, the uh, on the, on the jail doors, just so people understand, so these things, because the jail's so old, um. And these are more modern doors, but you can't just go and order the old stuff, basically, so they have to figure out a solution, a kind of a custom solution when you're dealing with an older building.
This uh, company, Southern Folger, they actually only work on older jails, that's their full-time company is going in and outfitting older jail with doors and. Uh, windows and whatever is needed on older facilities, so that's how they, they're.
These, these items all have to be custom made because they're not a stock item due to the uh. On, on.
That's just older, it's an older, older system, older mechanism.
On time supply.
Yeah.
Yep. So. Yep, so that's something you can run to an Argen.
And these guys don't keep them on hand either.
Yep. So that was, yeah, it was custom built for our education here. All right, um. In front of you there, you'll have some jail numbers, that's our yearly jail report. Um, I'll point out some of the the big numbers here that kind of change your, our average daily population for the year of twenty twenty-two was sixty-three point nine. Uh, that's up about four point seven seven compared to twenty-one, uh, which kind of brings us back to about the pre-COVID numbers, kind of where we were sitting, so. Uh, if you look at the total number of bookings, down on the next page there, uh, about two thousand two hundred and seventy-nine bookings for the year of twenty twenty-two, it was down about a hundred and seventy-nine from the year prior. I think this one's kind of interesting, started keeping track of this one in two thousand nineteen, um, in the year of twenty twenty-two, we held sixty-six people in protective custody mental holds. In our facility that had no charges, so uh, when HSA gets their new appropriate regional facility up and going, I'm hoping they gets that number down to zero, so we don't have someone in our facility that doesn't. Need to be there, so, um, so hopefully that number can get dropped down, we get that up and going. Total prisoner days for twenty twenty-two was twenty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-four. That was a little bit more than twenty-one, which was twenty-one thousand seven thirty-four. Uh. You'll see, we took in seventy-three thousand dollars and seventy-three thousand two hundred and ten dollars and nine cents of twenty-four seventies, which is down a little bit from twenty twenty-one. Decrease of about twenty-one thousand forty-three dollars. Here's some interesting numbers here on the twenty-four seven program on the P V Ts, there was twenty-four thousand twenty-five P V Ts that were given in twenty twenty-two with eighty-six failures. Uh, there was two thousand seven hundred and seventy U As that were given in twenty twenty-two with forty-nine failures and forty-nine misses, so about ninety-eight. Essentially failures, cuz the missed U As are also failures, so. Uh, and there was nine drug patches that were applied with one failure. Um, seventy-one individuals were wearing a scram bracelet at some point twenty twenty-two with three failures, so you see the twenty-four seven program is effective, it helps. Keep people over, that is something that they're put on there via the courts, either for bond or for uh, part of their sentencing for the twenty-four seven program, so. We'll run through just some of the the monies that were collected here, you see, twenty twenty-two, twenty-four seven, uh, collected seventy-three thousand two hundred and ten dollars and nine cents and program fees, worker lease fees, collected fifty-six thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars. Out of county contracts, one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Um. Fingerprint fees, twenty-six hundred dollars, money to the clerk of courts. Collected six hundred and sixty-eight thousand and sixty dollars and ninety-five cents. Uh, collected forty-nine thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars of trampies and two thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars of cost of confinement that went back to the auditor's office for a grand total of nine hundred and ninety-nine. Thousand dollars, nine, nine hundred and ninety-nine. Hundred thousand and ninety dollars and thirty cents, the tongue twister, so that was the grand total money that came and went through the jail. So you can see there's a deal, a lot of money there, so of all that money, two hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-five cents was remitted back to the county. For, that was the fingerprint fees, out of county contracts, but cost of confinement, um, all that. And then there was eight hundred and fifty-one thousand one hundred and forty-five, forty-two dollars and four cents and twenty-four seven fees, bonds, fines, trampies, all that. A new thing here for twenty twenty-two, we had about six months' worth of commissary, collected eleven thousand dollars, eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-eight cents in commissary profit from twenty twenty-two, so. On the very last page, I like to, gotta share this one, this one's kind of an interesting stat here, we start talking about our regional jail here. See, in twenty twenty-two, our average daily population was sixty-three point nine inmates, um. And if you look, you'll see ninety-two point six percent of those were Cottington County inmates, and only seven point four percent of those were for other counties. It's actually broke down for the last few years, I mean, twenty-one, it was ninety-three point nine five percent were Cottington County inmates, and six point oh five percent were out of county. And then in twenty twenty, it was ninety-one point four six Cottington County inmates and eight point five four percent other, so you can see that ranges. From six to even up to ten percent in two thousand nineteen, so. For out of county inmates.
And then, so the number underneath though, say, one oh one eighty-eight per day.
The one oh one eighty-eight per inmate per day, that is the cost to house an inmate in twenty twenty-two in the Cottington County Jail, I always came up with that number, who took the total money spent out of the jail budget. Um, wages, uh, doctor bills, everything that that costs the jail to operate, uh, was divided out. Uh, was divided out for the inmate days, and that's where we come up with the one oh one eighty-eight per day. Uh, there was a lot of bigger projects that were on there, camera projects and, um, door projects for like beyond this year's year, which will probably make this year's even higher yet. But those all take a factor into the cost of the inmate staying.
Yeah, that might be something to talk about when, as we're talking about other con- contracts with, with other counties, now that we're getting it.
Right, charging right now.
Right now, we are charging ninety-five dollars, uh, per day for inmates, so.
I'm getting a bargain right now, but they're, I mean, we, we can, it's a little hard to figure out, but you, you, you can, uh, factor in capital. You know, depreciation basically, so you, you can factor that in too.
Not factored in the news number here.
It's just operational, that's just, this is, this is taking the budget.
That's what it costs to operate last year for inmate day, so.
But it, but it would also include like capital repairs and stuff like that, like, yeah, so.
Yeah, yeah, all repairs, yeah, we took those out, that number, yeah, does decrease a little bit, but I included those because those are. Expenses to operate and to run the jail.
Yeah.
If we jump that to a hundred and fifty bucks a day, it make us feel better.
Make us feel better.
One last report here, Sheriff's Office number. Pass them on down. All right. You'll see on the front page there, you guys on the SO annual report. Okay. Um. Traffic complaints were staying steady with twenty-one, uh, we had five hundred and nineteen traffic complaints in twenty twenty-two. Uh, there's three hundred and ninety-one vehicle accidents I responded to. Year twenty twenty-two, which is staying comparable with twenty twenty-one, we've actually four less. Animal complaints, two hundred and eighty-nine, we responded to, it's a little bit higher. Uh, twenty-nine assaults that responded to, twenty-one burglary calls. Fifty-three disorderly conduct, you can see those were down just a little bit. Uh, the drug narcotics arrests and complaints is actually down a little bit, it was seventeen twenty-one, and you can see it's down to ten here in twenty twenty-two. Um. Theft calls, forty-seven, that's staying kind of steady. Fanalism, uh, about fifteen, looking at twenty-one, we're at twenty-eight, so that's down a little bit. Uh, one of the big ones here is the warrants issued, you can see there was nine hundred and twenty-one warrants issued in twenty twenty-two compared to thirteen hundred in twenty twenty-one, so. Uh, considerable of, less of warrants that were issued and processed through officers.
Any, any, uh, comment on that, the reason?
Um, I don't have the answer for that one, like I say, the warrants all come from the courts and, um, I, I just don't have that answer, so it's pretty interesting.
Who's sitting on the judge's chair, right?
Yeah.
Chair, if you have a question on this report, Brad, underage consumptions looks like we. Increased that slightly over twenty twenty-one, but we've seen a, an increase since twenty seventeen, a pretty good sized increase, what do you contribute the additional underage consumption?
I think a lot of that is enforcement, uh, we're kind of working with the police department and working with public patrol, that's one thing that we've kind of been targeting, working with like area tech. College there, uh, one thing that the community has seen an issue with underage drinking, so, you know, um, enforcement on that has been big, big over the last couple of years. Um, actually, kind of form a coalition with the police department, community partners to kind of focus on that, so that is kind of maybe where you're seeing some of these numbers are, are when you. Have our party, they're when you get monitored.
Are we noticing more enforcement of underage parties out in the county, like in our smaller communities as well?
There's been a few here and there, uh, uh. Maybe you might have a, a tech student that's renting a place out there, becomes a problem, I'll, uh. We usually work with them as inspectors on those and shut those down so they don't become a problem.
You work with the school up there pretty well too.
Yep. Yep.
It's, that kind of thing's been noticed in the, in the JDAI, so the, the PD gave a, a report on, just comparing juvenile stats basically to adult stats and, and. The kind of, the kind of going in opposite directions right at the moment, so, you know, but.
So, if you look at the next page here, just a couple more numbers here. Total monies received went through the sheriff's office, eight hundred and three thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighteen cents. Uh, sheriff fees received were eighty-four thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. And collected thirty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars and five cents on executions. Uh, warrant fees collected were four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, so you can see there's a lot of, a lot of money kind of coming and going there. If you scroll on down a little bit more, you'll see the, um, twenty twenty-two civil paper server, two thousand two hundred and sixty-three. Civil papers served, one hundred and nine executions were worked. Eight hundred and ninety-one warrants were served out of those nine hundred and. Twenty-one, so you can see that we're trying to make sure we keep those, we don't have a big pile of warrants that are stacking up, uh, or seven thousand ninety-eight calls per service. Transport miles, you can see those are down forty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-one compared to twenty twenty-one, which they were fifty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-nine. Uh, mortgage foreclosures are up a little bit, at seven mortgage foreclosures, twenty twenty-two compared to three in twenty twenty-one and even four in twenty twenty. Uh, you can see, if you look back into nineteen eighteen and seventeen, eleven, seventeen and thirty, they were considerably higher, so. I have seen quite a few more even coming through my office already, uh, for the year of twenty twenty-three here on the mortgage foreclosure, so. And there was one hundred and seventy-two accidents, ports that were, so.
But, just, just on the word executions, just so people, since we're in the criminal justice system.
Execution, I get that one a lot, uh, it's, it's not, uh, not what you think, it's a civil process. Part of our civil process here, so when someone gets a drug, they get somebody, uh, and execution ends up in our lap, and what that means is. Sheriff's Office is responsible for going out and levying on property for, um, somebody, so. Troy sues me, Troy can come after my cars and whatever, so the sheriff's office goes after, checks for liens and checks for all that, then we'll levy a. House, car, property that they have free and clear, and we'll have a sheriff sale and sell those. Uh, so much goes back to the county for fees and so much goes back to Troy for. Is.
Damage trust.
That's what an execution is in short, so.
Any other questions for the shirt?
Thanks for all the information.
Yeah.
We did a lot of info.
Showed us under.
Good information, all.
Busy office.
All right.
Thank you.
Hey, that brings us to agenda item number nine, so to note, we're shooting sports intent to hold a raffle. Oh, we have Jody, Jody here to help us note that.
I am here. Having done one of these for a while, um, on behalf of the Four H Leaders Association and our Shooting Sports Program, we're gonna try and do a raffle. To, um, raise some money for our Shooting Sports Program, so, um, we're working with Brotherhood Arms for our, um. Supplies for that fundraiser, and we're gonna sell four hundred tickets at twenty dollars apiece, so we just got approval. In the mail yesterday from the Secretary of State, and so we'll start our raffle March twenty-fourth. And it'll end May ninth, so, and we've also submitted to the city too, so.
Okay, all right, so we.
Get all our ducks in a row.
So just, yeah, we just, we just need to, to note it, uh, we don't have to take action on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions or?
Thanks, it's all covered, like if some, someone wins a, a gun, you know, all that paperwork is.
Done at the Brotherhood Arms, all laws, all firearm laws and regulations apply, yep. Yep.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Okay, number ten, action to approve the purchase of updated firewall equipment for the Extension Center Complex.
Off the.
It's not, it's not too exciting.
Yeah, well, um, what I'm presenting, so we had as a firewall for the Extension Office. Um, the system in there is ten years older better, and what we've discovered when we put the new phones in there, there's been some dropped calls and connecting point said that. The old system is not compatible with the, with the, the new phone systems, so, so they had come across to put a new firewall in there to upgrade the system. Out there, so, um, that is for twenty-four thousand, or twenty-four hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
So a motion from Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Waterman, any other discussion or question?
Again already?
No, no, it's not in yet.
What do they expect?
That I could not tell you, um, I just got this proposal last week right away for this, so I'm hoping soon. I, I know that, uh, a lot of this stuff is really is hard to get and so, but I know this one they could get accessible a lot faster, so.
But is this, and is it, did you say it was budgeted?
Um, this was not budgeted for this item and so that, but.
Is it kind of, and it's.
It's kind of a necessity to get this upgraded, so.
So it came from changing over the phones, is that?
What's that, yeah, this came through discovering through the phones and so that, that, yeah, firewall is old and outdated, so it needs to be upgraded, so.
Any, any other questions or discussion? Say, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say no, and that motion court carries.
You.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, number eleven, action to accept property insurance policy recommendations to offset current property values.
Uh, so I met with our property insurance, uh, company last week, Fisher Rounds here in Watertown, and. Our insurance premium or rates are not going up, but the cost, our replacement cost for our buildings has. Our building, it's, it's gone up, so we are looking at an increase for our property insurance, the rest of the, the theft and the inland marine all stayed. Relatively the same, but in order to. You know, offset that cost for the building's insurance, they, uh, the insurance representatives, um, suggested increasing our deductible. From five thousand to a thousand. And.
Five hundred. Five hundred to a thousand.
Five hundred to a, a thousand, correct, and from two fifty to a thousand with an annual premium, premium savings of fifteen hundred dollars. And then we have a large amount of items on our inland marine contractors' equipment. Um, that. They suggested deleting everything with under five thousand dollars in value and increasing the deductible from one thousand to two thousand. Which will recognize an annual premium savings of thirty-two hundred dollars. To help offset the, uh, the building, so. Um, there are a number of things on our inland marine that. It, it does need to be updated, it, there's just, some of that stuff is so old and it's. Uh, valued at less than a thousand dollars. Per item, so.
It just got forgotten about to be deleted.
Well, it just, you know, hasn't been looked at in a while, so it might be something you want to work with the insurance company this summer to see what other steps we can take. To, um. To protect ourselves.
I move to approve the recommendation.
So, Johnson, second by Waterman, any other questions or discussion since we have Cindy here to answer? Okay, hearing now, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Okay, that motion carries. Okay, number twelve, action to approve claims for payment.
Okay, we'll need to do claims in three motions. Uh, the first one will allow Troy to recuse himself from this claim, it is to the Watertown City Finance Officer. In the amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and two dollars and twenty cents, and that is for nine-one-one surcharge collections in the month of December.
Motion. I'll second it, second by Schwer, questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say no, okay, that motion carries. Okay.
And we had another one come in just this morning that it's in our best interest to take care of, it is the, uh. Notary bond for the employee in the auditor's office, the, um. The notary mission expires on March seventeenth, which is cutting it pretty close to when we would cut bills in March, so. It's thirty dollars to renew that notary bond for the employee in the auditor's office.
Make motion to approve, so motion by Van Dusen, is her second. Second, second by Waterman. Uh, any questions or discussion for this thirty dollar bill? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say no, okay, that motion carries.
And then we have February salary claims in the amount of six hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and nine dollars and seventy-six cents.
Motion approved.
Hello.
So motion by Johnson, second, second by Schwer, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Okay, that motion carries. Okay, that's it for claims for payment, okay, so number thirteen, action to approve automatic budget supplement.
Um, nothing for thirteen or fourteen.
Okay, and then that leads us to fifteen, which is action to approve travel requests.
And I have three of those, uh, one is for a deputy sheriff to get his basic academy certification. And the other two are for the welfare office, one to attend the South Dakota Association of County Welfare Officers Spring Meeting. And the CPCM Ray of Hope Child Abuse Prevention Breakfast.
So, motion by Johnson, sir, seconds. Second, second by Schwer, any other questions or discussion? Yeah, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say no, okay, that motion carries. Holding notices, possible coronal commissioners, uh, so we have a Suvali meeting on March fifteenth, that's still.
And I do need to know, Myron's the only commissioner that has responded, I do need to know who intends to go.
I will think, I think, I think I'm planning to go, I'm not, I'm gonna try to, I'll try to go. You know. Okay. Um, and, yeah, just so, if you can make it to those things, those are, those are good, good chances to talk to our fellow commissioners from.
Things too, um, of course, Cindy's retirement party is gonna be. Right?
Yeah.
And, uh, you're gonna hang around for that?
I'll try and be here.
Also, there could be, uh, um, the quorum at, uh, Cindy's is from two to four and then from four to six. At the Goss is the, um.
And the new president of.
The, the new, uh, CEO from the hospital, John Ellen. Will be introduced to his wife, and so some of us, at least I got an invitation to that, so some of us might be there.
I think there was another one for the new president of LATC, I'm trying to time it in.
That was Sanders. Week ago.
Was it a week ago?
I think so.
Oh, okay.
Then, uh, I also have, now, have I got my, Steve is still here, I got the annual read meeting at, uh, March sixth.
Yeah.
And that would be before next meeting as well.
Thank you.
And that's at six o'clock, right?
Yep.
And that'll take care of.
Okay, anything else, all right, thanks, Commissioner Johnson, all right, um, is there any old business, number seventeen? Any new business? And any public comment in the open?
Chair, matter of personal privilege.
Granted.
Right. Um, I believe you added resolution twenty twenty-three oh six to your agenda. Special vendors, I would read that, please.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh six. Cindy Brugman Day in Cottington County. Whereas Cindy Brugman has served in the auditor's office for forty-five years, nine months and three days from June first nineteen seventy-seven. To March third twenty twenty-three, to include twenty-one years, eleven months and three days from April first two thousand one to March third twenty twenty-three as the Cottington County Auditor. And whereas Cindy Brugman has performed the duties as Cottington County Auditor with due diligence. And to ensure that all the laws of the state of South Dakota have been followed. And whereas Cindy Brugman has ensured to hold safe and fair elections for candidates and questions. And whereas Cindy Brugman has during her time as Cottington County Auditor. Served on several boards and committees, including the State Board of Elections and the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, and whereas. Cindy Brugman has served as the president and also the parliamentarian of the South Dakota Association of County Officials. And whereas Cindy Brugman has earned the respect of all of her colleagues and the residents of Cottington County during her tenure as Cottington County Auditor. And therefore be it resolved by the Board of the Cottington County Commissioners and on behalf of all the citizens of Cottington County. That Cindy Brugman be recognized for her exemplary service and that she be rightfully recognized for her dedication to the public she served. And be it further resolved that March third twenty twenty-three. Be designated as Cindy Brugman Day in Cottington County. And that a record of this act be spread upon the official minutes of the Board of Cottington County Commissioners. The above and foregoing resolution was adopted this twenty-eighth day of February twenty twenty-three at Watertown, Cottington County, South Dakota. Signed by Chair Commissioner Dee Lee Gable. Signed by Chair Commissioner Dee Lee Gable, myself, Commissioner Van Dusen, Commissioner Charlie Waterman, Commissioner Myron Johnson, and Commissioner Randall Schwer.
Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So.
Motion by Johnson.
I'll second it.
Second by Schwer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Cindy Brugman Davis.
Cindy Brugman.
Okay, all right. Not till Friday, right?
We'll have to.
Thank you.
We'll pass around. Yeah, we'll sign it. Okay.
Okay.
Congratulations, Cindy. Thank you for your dedication and service.
Thank you. Been an experience.
I imagine.
Some good, some bad.
Seen some changes over the years.
Some changes, yes, yes.
It's been mostly positive.
It's been mostly positive. Yes, there there are, there have been some days that, you know. Yep, it is. And same with any job, yep. So I've worked with a lot of good department heads and elected officials and my own staff. So, and board members here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Um, I think, let's move on to number twenty. So we, we have a need for executive session? I don't, I think we're okay. I think we're okay with that. So, um, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second by Waterman, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post say no.